You may not have even been a thought.
Is that my name?
No, I don't know.
We'll know whenever you're ready, Rob.
I'm getting a not responding message.
I'll bring that computer.
We're in.
Ready?
Yes.
I'd like to call to order this recess meeting from December 19th, 2011 of the South Orange Board of Trustees to order today, Monday, January 9th. Could we please have a roll call?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Goldberg?
Here.
Trustee Gould?
Here.
Trustee Levinson?
Here.
And President Torpe?
Here.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the village's website and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may be taken at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. This is a very quick meeting with three resolutions on the consent agenda, so I will open it up for public comments now, but people will also have a chance for public comments at our regular meeting, which will hopefully begin in about two minutes. So if anyone would like to speak now, they're certainly welcome to. Sure. Just come up to the podium.
David Solomon, 257 Irving Avenue. I'd like to comment to the rest of the village trustees who have not already been in contact with residents dissatisfaction with the timing and notification on the matter of the hearing last Tuesday from Next G Communications. Registered letter was sent out over the Christmas holidays and a meeting, which we were told by Mr. Burkholder's office was scheduled by Next G, was in fact scheduled by Mr. Burkholder on January 3rd, the first business day after the holidays at 4:00 PM. This being a commuter town, we know the inconveniences that that poses upon residents. We also would like to know the status of the transcript, which was to be made available. It's pretty much a week after that right now. Many residents were not able to attend that meeting due to the time it was scheduled. That's all.
Thank you.
Do you have an update in the transcript?
It should be on the website now. If not now, then by tomorrow morning, the transcript from the Next G hearing.
The same thing.
That was sent out today. So if it's not on the website tonight, people can check tomorrow morning and they'll be able to find it there. If there's no one else...
Can we get...I am curious to answer his question about why the meeting...can we get clarity on why the meeting was scheduled? I've heard that from multiple people, why the meeting was scheduled on a Tuesday at 4:00.
It was a business day. The requirement was to notify the three property owners involved. We voluntarily notified additional property owners around those three. And scheduled it for a business day. And that was really it.
Was the intent of the hearing to get input from the public or was the intent for the vendor to present their case?
Well, the intent really was for the vendor to present their case because the issues appear to be fairly narrow concerning the applicability of the ordinance to this case.
It's really a legal issue, more than anything else. It's a very, and as Mr. Burkholder said, it's a very narrow legal issue. And the issue's a very simple one. Is there a property right upon which Next G can rely in order to enter the property, to install the antenna, and then subsequently to maintain it? It's just that simple. None of the other many, many issues that have been discussed in this case have any relevance other than that. Is there a property right on which they can rely in order to install those antennas? PSE and G has declined to allow them to install them on their antennas for very cogent reasons. We have looked at those reasons. We have now called in Next G at this hearing. We've asked them, can you tell us on what basis you think you have a right to go in and do that? We have given them until this coming Friday to submit a supplemental brief to outline those legal points. And shortly thereafter, Mr. Burkholder will issue a decision on that very narrow issue.
And as you've been doing, I know you've talked to some residents offline about this, so are you still available to do that if people have questions?
I am willing to discuss those kinds of legal issues in whatever detail they would like to discuss them with me. In fact, I have exchanged emails with...I've answered every email that has reached me or any email that any member of the Board of Trustees has forwarded to me, and I've spoken to scores of residents.
Do you anticipate there'll be additional hearings coming up?
No.
No, okay.
And Reagan, when you do issue your brief, your ruling, whatever the proper term is, how will that be communicated? Will it be put, sent to Patch and Alternative Press and News Record? Will it be put on our website? How will residents know the result?
Send it to the parties.
Those three properties.
The three parties.
Well, Next G and the three property owners.
Okay.
And post it on the website. Certainly can send it to the media, sure.
Okay. And you expect that that'll be next week sometime?
I don't know that I can anticipate what Next G is going to say in its brief. That's the problem.
Do you expect them to make further application to other areas within the village?
They didn't rule it out.
And if they were to do so, is there a way to have those public hearings during the evening hours so the residents can attend the meetings more easily?
I doubt that there are going to be any further hearings.
Even if they have other applications coming through?
This obviously, if...well, let me put it to you this way, I shouldn't prejudge it. Assuming there is a denial of their request, this would then become a test case for some action further on, whether in front of the BPU or the courts. If it's approved, then obviously there would be other applications, potentially.
And if there were other applications with other hearings, could we have those hearings in the evening hours? Is that appropriate? Or does it have to be during the day?
It doesn't have to be. I mean, I would think... The idea of needing more hearings and a continuing series of hearings, I think requires an awful lot of hypotheticals before you say that would happen. But given the first hypothetical and that the village continues to be involved in some way, I mean, the issue is to be resolved under the ordinance is that a property owner refuses to allow a public utility on the property owner's property in order to make repairs or improvements to the public utility. If that were to happen, where Next G's right to be on the poles were established and property owners refused to permit them on, I would think that the first hearing would establish whether they had a right to do it, so that there wouldn't be a whole series of hearings.
You would hope.
I would hope, yeah. I mean, what the ordinance appears to be designed to do, and this dates from early 80s, 1982, to deal with a situation in which public service has to fix a transformer in a rear yard, and the property owner says, "No, you can't come on my property." And this ordinance appears to be designed to let the village issue an order to the property owner, which can be enforced by the police, saying, "Allow public service on your property. They need to fix the transformer. Your neighborhood doesn't have electricity."
Is the reason because there are no easements for the utility?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, the only easement is an easement by prescription.
Right.
Not to be obtuse, and I understand what you're saying. If we should ever by some chance have another one of these hearings, could we do it in the evening hours?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time?
Marlo Tabron. I live at 219 South Orange Avenue. I want to personally thank village president Alex Tourpe and whoever in the village had the rite aid turn the lights on in their parking lot. On December the 7th, I was hit by a car. And it wasn't brought to my attention until by some residents who apparently had noticed for quite some time that the parking lot adjacent to the rite aid had no lights. And I'm just trying to understand who enforces this? Who has the responsibility? Because a rite aid, if I'm not mistaken, is the only business on South Orange Avenue that has a parking lot adjacent to their business, and that is a large parking lot. And it had no lights on. And if you check with the police department, there's been a lot of criminal activity that's been going on there. And I can guarantee you, as I'm speaking now, those with criminal intent, whether it has to do with the economy or whatever, they know this area very well. And there has to be something done with lighting. My next concern is the lighting around Grove Park. Grove Park is just too dark. It would be different if it was a park sitting out by itself, but there are residents, homes that are sitting around that park. And there are now deers that are coming out in that park very early in the morning. You can't see them until the lights come up on them because that Grove Park, that Old Grove Road is just too dark. I know the village has a lot on their plate, but you gotta step up with the times now. Things are changing, and as things change, you have to think outside of the box. And so I really think something should be done with that Grove Park area. But I just wanted to thank Alex for making sure that the lights were turned on as the rite aid, because they should have been off for quite some time. Thank you.
Thanks, Marlo. And also, as soon as you...we spoke about that, you know, asked our police department to go take a look in code enforcement, and it was done a couple days later. They really did a good job staying on top of that. And obviously, if you guys notice that kind of thing, or anybody else does, you know, make sure to pass it along. You know, it's hard for us to know every single square foot of town and whether everything's in order or not. And at the very least, as far as Grove Park, we can certainly reach out to Public Works and make sure that everything that is there is at least working for the short term and see what else we can do going forward. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening to members of the trustees board. First of all, I would like to wish everybody a very happy and blessed New Year. And I also would like to take this opportunity to thank you all for the recent accomplishments because about a month ago, I did bring up a lighting issue concerning the flag pole, and I do notice as an accomplishment, that is lit up at night, so at least we can see our flag blowing in the wind, et cetera, out of respect for our country. And I also brought up about there was a light that was blown on the little wellhouse, I guess you would call it, that has been adjusted and fixed. So what thankfulnesses do, I do say thank you all and whoever else was involved. I also have noticed that Public Works did a great job in getting rid of most of the trees that were damaged, et cetera, from the storm. However, towards the front part of the park, I don't know if these are new ones that came down, or maybe they were just overlooked by Public Works, but there are numerous tree branches by the front part of the park.
Which part?
Grove Park. And in the rear area where the trees were picked up, there is one oak tree with a large branch, and it's just hanging from the tree itself. So if somebody gives those branches a good tug, or if kids are in the area and they just start playing that tree, it's a thick bark, and if you look up, it's just hanging onto the tree. So if someone really gives that thing a pull, that half of the tree is going to come down. So can somebody please look at it before someone gets hurt? Also, I would like to bring up the fact that we have numerous street signs that are missing. South Orange Avenue and Riggs Place, the street sign is missing. Also, South Orange Avenue and Park Place, the street sign is missing. Also, South Orange Avenue and Holland Road, there's no street sign. So out of towners, or God forbid, if there's an emergency and somebody has to call the fire department or the police department, and they don't exactly know where they are, there's a problem. So once again, I say thank you. God bless you in the new year, and thanks for the previous accomplishments we've made in South Orange.
Thank you. And we'll look into all those for you. Is there anybody else?
Yes. I'd just like to express my appreciation for everybody's thoughts in the last week. Thank you.
All right. And I'd just like to share with everyone what you're thanking us for. Howard lost his mother a few days ago, but he was fortunate to have...his mom was 102 years old. So that is definitely...she was in the minority as far as having such a long, wonderful life and a loving family and a loving son.
Thank you.
Let's do close public comments and move on to our consent agenda of this continuation meeting. And there are three resolutions. We could have the clerk please read them.
Yes, thank you. We have a resolution authorizing the cancellation of an emergency appropriation, a resolution authorizing cancellation of certain of the unexpended appropriation balances for calendar year 2011, and a resolution amending and restating Resolution Number 2011-324 to effect transfers between certain budget appropriations.
These are mostly housekeeping financial items. I don't know if there's anything Reagan or Howard, if there's anything you'd like to add just for clarification to the public. These are annual housekeeping things we have to do. Do we have a motion?
I move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is there any new business for this meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. If only that was actually the end of the meeting. I would like to now call to order the regular meeting of the South Orange Board of Trustees today, Monday, January 9th, 2012. Do we have a roll call, please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Goldberg?
Here.
Trustee Gould?
Still here.
Trustee Levinson?
Here.
And President Torpe?
Here.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting had also been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the village's website and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may be taken.
Thank you. Before we get started, we do have a number of announcements tonight. The first, the South Orange Community Garden. Registration for the third season for the community garden will begin on Saturday the 21st at 9:00 AM at the Baird Center. Registration is on a first come, first served basis. The community garden is located in Riverside Park on 3rd Street between Voes and the Church. You can find out more at southorange.org/communitygarden.
And just to note that the documents that are there currently are still last year's documents, but they're being updated this week, and the latest documents for 2012 will be there before the end of the week.
Thank you. Village Hall offices and village facilities will be closed on Monday, January 16th in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. There's a Board of Trustees Budget Workshop meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, January 18th at 7:30 PM here in Village Hall. There is a special improvement district workshop next Tuesday at 6:30 PM here in Village Hall. I also want to remind people that any...
7:30?
7:30? Okay. Thank you. I want to remind people in the community, the nonprofits, that we have now time slots available in our meetings. People who want to come in and present what their nonprofit or community group does, take five or 10 minutes to share all their activities with the Board of Trustees and with the community, please email the clerk@clerk@southorange.org to set that up and get on the agenda for that. I also just want to take a second to congratulate all of the elected officials who were sworn in. This January, a lot of towns had their swear-in ceremonies, and special congratulations to our Essex County Freeholders, who saw a couple new freeholders starting in 2012, which is very exciting. There's also one more announcement. Chief Marky?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is me, I'm tan. I'm the same person.
I was gonna ask. I'm jealous.
I have an announcement for the public, and I'd like to let them know, back in the summer of this year, I filed a grant with the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program with the federal government, runs through FEMA, and for the sum of $700,000, excuse me, sum of $700,000 to help with the defer the cost of replacement ladder truck for the village. The grant program is highly competitive, and I just wanted to announce that we were successful in our application for the grant, and we were awarded a grant on December 23rd from FEMA and the AFG Program for $700,000. This is a matching grant. $665,000 will be coming from the federal government, and $35,000 will be the cost to the village. So I'm very pleased for the village, and I'm extremely pleased for the firefighters that I represent, and I think this is a wonderful thing.
I'd like to say congratulations, what an accomplishment. And in this time, you know, the last few years, for like all municipalities, including South Orange, the budget is a real, real challenge to just meet all our needs and at the same time, keep a hold on taxes. And this will go a long way for 2012 of helping us with that. Chief, what is the total cost of this fire truck, ladder fire truck?
Preliminary estimates, and as I said, without being very long-winded, I've been working on this for two years, to look for a specific type of vehicle for our needs, specifically a rear-mounted 100-foot aerial ladder. And that's why I was speaking to different manufacturers to see if they could meet our needs, because it looked like the industry did not make a vehicle that would satisfy our needs, and we would have to go to a different style vehicle, which left our budget concerns from somewhere between $700,000 and 1.1 million. I was successful in getting one of the manufacturers to engineer a truck that will meet our needs, and subsequently, that cost figure was in the low end of my estimate. So we're looking at approximately $700,000 total for the cost of the truck.
Wow. So this grant that you were able to achieve on behalf of the village will pretty much cover that cost, which was going to be a significant impact on the 2012 budget. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would like to say thank you as well to Bill Pascrell, who made sure that we got that appropriation.
Congressman Bill.
Yeah, our past Congressman Bill Pascrell.
It comes as somewhat of a disappointment to me that the news had come out while I was gone, that Congressman Pascrell was no longer your representative. Recently, is about a month ago, when the appropriations, when the budget was being struck with the federal government, the entire AFG program was removed from the budget. And Congressman Pascrell, at 2:00 in the morning, put a rider onto a piece of legislation and actually saved that entire program. So, you know, I have so much admiration for him, and I think he represented you well. And I don't say that about a lot of people.
High praise.
It's true. You know, when we were, just over the weekend, when we were engaged in a discussion of what are we going to do with respect to the jitneys, totally unrelated to the fire truck or any of the other things that he's done for the village, certainly the Ripper Greenway never could have happened if it weren't for Congressman Pascrell, these are some of the things that I think Dean Farmer doesn't understand by, you know, lumping us in now with...and all of the congressional districts, with the exception of one really, have just become incumbent districts. But every article that I looked at, past article, it was, you know, $6 million to fix the stations, Bill Pascrell, you know, 3.5 for operating for the jitneys in the first 32 towns. We were one of the...Maplewood was the first, then it was expanded to six towns, then, you know, it went to competitive bid through New Jersey Transit, 32, 3.5 million, Bill Pascrell, all the way down the line. He has raised the money, no matter what kind of capital project it was, operating, pollution, traffic, fire, police, EMS, you name it. I don't know what we're going to do.
Yeah.
I can't even tell you how affected I am by this. I think it's a terrible mistake.
I think it's a loss to the village and the residents of the village to lose his representation. But I'm sure he will be there for you. If you call his office, Bill Pascrell, the man I know, to pick up that phone and whatever he can do, he'll help you.
I agree. I agree, but still, in all, it's not his job anymore, and he'll have other constituents to take care of. Anyway, thanks for saying that.
Chief, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work in putting that together.
You're welcome. It's a great way to start 2012.
Indeed.
It is. Thank you.
Now go find the next one, chief.
I'm already working on the next one, so.
So next, we have a presentation for Main Street, South Orange.
Good evening, Carol Anzalone Newman and Catherine Crenshaw.
Good evening. Carol Anzalone Newman and Catherine Crenshaw. This is not a full presentation. This is a presentation from the Design Committee, and we just wanted to share this with you before we start the project and introduce it to you. I know we've discussed it before, but we want to do a little work on the train trestle that is on South Orange Avenue by the Village Diner. And this is a long time coming. We had been approached early on by some of the property owners in town, saying, isn't there something we can do about that area under the tracks? So it's not huge changes, but we think it makes a big impact. And I'll give Catherine a floor now.
You guys look at the first slide. The idea here is, this is the current conditions now. And what we were hoping we could do is create a visual that would help us have a discussion about New Jersey Transit, about what's actually possible in the space. And the best way to do that, we find, is with a more comprehensive visual to kind of start that, to help everybody understand. If you go to the second page, the idea is here, we wanted to do something very simple and straightforward to kind of start that discussion and get feedback as well. I think the bike racks were an easy addition, the continuation of the lanterns that are on the other side of the train station currently. There's actually spots already conduit there, and I've often wondered if maybe the intention was to put them there, and it just didn't get done. On the other side of South Orange as well, there's spots for three lights to hang. The addition, we thought of a historical marker in the iron sign that's kind of to the right of the stairwell there, that would give a little history about the train station, the same way it does in the interior currently. And lastly, on the wall, as a way to kind of help beautify and give some historical reference to the train station, there's postcards from the early 1900s that are colorized that we thought maybe we could do a transfer process that seems to be a newer thing, where it's on a large printer, there's strips, and they use an adhesion onto cement or kickplates for steps or elevators, and it would be something that wouldn't create any holes. It would just be something that could be mounted on and replaced as time went by. That's at the top of the stairwell. If you go to the next page, it kind of highlights where we particularly like the bike racks that are located by the river there currently, because I think the black is the emphasis with the gold currently at the train trestle underpass, and the black would suit nicely. The iron signs that are used there and lanterns. And lastly, this is kind of a close-up of, these are the historical postcards that I think are really charming and give you a wonderful insight into what the streetscape was back at that time, when the train trestle and the train station were built. So that's what we're talking about, is taking those postcards and doing this transfer process. And that's what we wanted to see if New Jersey Transit would be open to that, because they seem to be okay with historical references at their train stations. And that was an idea, and we have a few of those. And we'd be interested if people have some they'd like to share that we can review as part of the project. The next page shows you just, we hoped to point out to New Jersey Transit that the painting of the trestle had stopped at a certain point at the archway there, and it seems like it makes sense to continue, and maybe there is some need for some patching and repair there. And on the other side, we just wondered, in the beautification, if they would be open to a repaint of the garage there, potentially in actually the color of the stonework to make it recess and not accentuate. And the other archway is a possible space to have some historical timeline and photos that could be done in that transfer process as well. And the last page just gives you an idea of a before and after, just layered together so you can see. So we would just, any comments, concerns? Oh, and the map in that one spot. The idea was maybe it's a map of kind of just loose kind of artistic map of the town, and kind of gives you points of interest that have, I like the idea of highlighting things that were the original buildings in the community, the firehouse. And I love the idea that there's another spot for bike racks. I know this comes up sometimes where we've needed a spot to put them, and this is just to throw it out there that it seems like there's potential. Brickwork, I think, you know, is the one element that I think would really make it, really bring it together and kind of open up the space.
I have a statement and a question. First, I think it's wonderful, and I thank you both so much for taking this on, because that is a huge eyesore, and this looks really terrific. It's a terrific idea. I have a question on the transfer that you're talking about. Do you have any idea of how long those transfers survive in the exterior?
We're gonna do some research. I saw in Brooklyn that there was an art project where they actually did images of people on the stoops on the lower kickplate that they adhered, and I thought, oh, and I've seen more and more of this. And I've seen, actually, in Penn Station as well.
Penn Station going up the stairs, but that's interior, so that's why I was asking about the exterior.
I think in the underpass, it would probably hold up very well. Maybe outside by the soap pack, by that arch, not as much, because it'll be more on the elements. But I think once we talk to New Jersey Transit and see what they're open to, then I felt like we really, we'd explore much further about who does it, who has the, you know, how long it will last. But I like the idea that if it did get damaged, I don't think we could replace it. And it's, it has some flexibility at that one.
Thank you. It looks great. Thank you.
I agree. It looks, it looks great. Are you, are you going to them to ask for permission and for them to do the work, or then get permission, and then we then have to fundraise and do the work?
Well, I guess it's just a starting point, because I'm curious, if, will they look at this and say, oh, we wanted to do the lanterns, you know, and just kind of get the discussion going. And if there, I wonder too, if it does get sponsored, will they let us put a sign up that says this area was sponsored and funded by so-and-so? And that, I don't know if they let you do or not. So we have a lot of questions in that way. So then we feel like after we have this, that discussion, looking at this visual, I think we'll have a lot more information to go from, and then figure out what we can and can't do.
They, I had some preliminary discussions with some people at Transit, and the first words out of their mouths are, we have no money. So that we know.
We speak the same language.
But we do have some interest from property owners. I don't know when the rubber meets the road, whether they'll actually put up money, but it's, you know, showing them, the point I wanted to make about Transit is, every person that we spoke to said, you have to have something to show us first. So that's why we went ahead and did this, because there's really no reason to get together with them unless you have something to show, so they can see the scope and what they're actually saying yes or no to.
And then I think once we have that meeting, then we'll know more what's possible, and then we'll just see what we can do, and maybe it's just-
You're the speaker.
Maybe it's just bits at a time, you know, but it's a plan that's out there and can be referenced.
Great. Thanks for doing this.
I would suggest, make a couple suggestions. It really looks great. Thank you, Catherine and Carol. First of all, our new Congressman, Donald Payne, should be asked to bring home the bacon on that project. He, along with Congressman Pascrell, was actually responsible for the $6 million to waterproof. You can see it only lasts so many years, but back in about '96, the trestles from here to East Orange, and I think North Broad Street underwent a lot of work, so he knows where to get the money. And I think there is going to be a federal transportation bill coming down the pipe, so this shouldn't be our only request. Obviously, we should be requesting a lot of money for various transportation projects. But by all means, contact Representative Payne's office. We've previously asked New Jersey Transit to put bike racks in the place that you showed those four racks, and they've said no. I think that was a different executive director, and I think we should just be re-asking, but just so you're aware of that, I wouldn't necessarily bring it up.
Okay.
But we need a lot more bike racks than that there. There'd be, they'd be way oversubscribed. And even though those are kind of decorative for the place that you showed them, there's really not a lot of kids who bicycle to that particular baseball area. Mostly, they come with their parents, so, you know, in a vehicle. So those are, even though you like them, we can get other black ones, because they don't hold as many bicycles. There's not as much capacity as some other designs that you might also find attractive.
Because I do think it's important that they be able to be both sides.
Yeah.
And I think there's actually a lot of room there.
There is a lot of room. That's unutilized. You could easily do a double row and a longer, you know, you could do like maybe six or something like that, two rows of six or something like that. But if you stuck with that design, but I'm just bringing it up.
And maybe we can get some, maybe that's where New Jersey Transit may see, if you do do it, it's this amount, you know, we'll kind of go from there. I'm also looking forward to, I think, once that plywood is down, that's currently up, I mean, it actually, it is a very interesting space.
Right.
And there'll be a lot more light coming in, and the only other thing is, if there were bikes, there may be lights above the bike racks. That might make sense.
Well, one of the principal purposes for the River Greenway path from the neighborhood that's not served by the jitney, that is the West Montrose neighborhood, is so that people could, people who generally access this north stairway, you know, could come through, whether they're biking or walking, put their bike there rather than have to go to the main station, because they don't have to go to the main station.
Right.
They just walk, you know, they just run up the north stairway. So that's one of the reasons why, that's one of the terminus, terminus points of the project.
I think it's interesting, too, just how the trestle is used so often just across the street, people coming home, it's a way they cross South Orange Avenue.
Exactly.
And it's used more and more and more, so.
And now with the South Orange Commons being built there, it's a natural, but this is, you know, even the Transit Village program, that whole thing, this is gonna be developed, and this needs to be upgraded.
One thought I might offer, in some conversations I had with New Jersey Transit, is to try and get the county on board with some of the improvements. There seemed to be some confusion with them between who was responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalks next to South Orange Ave. And if I remember correctly, they seemed to be under the impression that it was the county. So if we could get them to buy into this also, then going to Transit with the county might help even more.
All right.
But I think this is like an absolutely fantastic design, especially considering the South Orange Commons. I mean, that will help connect all those residential units to Eden Gourmet and the rest of town in a really nice way.
May I volunteer? If you follow up with me, I'll try, I'll take the initiative on the county part. And Carol, if you follow up with me, I will take the initiative to schedule a meeting with Congressman Payne.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we can move on to our minutes from the December, our December 19th meeting. Unless there's any discussion, is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'd like to open up this meeting for public comments. I don't know if we have the sign-in sheet. I don't know who spoke already.
Same people.
Is there anybody who did want to speak who didn't speak before? Sure.
Good evening. President Torpey, Trustees.
Your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Melissa Sampson. I'm a longtime resident of South Orange. I'd like to know, what are your New Year's resolution plans for the residents of South Orange?
Sorry?
What are your New Year's resolution plans for the residents of South Orange?
Are those all your comments? Okay. Thank you. We actually have a resolution on this evening's agenda to support a set of priorities and goals. So hopefully that will answer that question. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Yes, Chief Markey.
My apologies, but the reason, one of the reasons why I came up to speak about the grant, I know it's a kind of a redundant question at this point, but I'd like to ask the Board for permission to accept the grant.
Let's think about it. Yes.
Only $700,000?
It was just a formality. I just wanted to make sure I covered it.
Yes.
Yeah, you're-
You're clear.
The question is, is that that creates a trigger to start the timing for getting the ladder truck?
Yes. One of the things that we will now go into the specifications, and specify is the delivery date, because these grants have a performance period of 12 months. So the man, whoever gets the bid will have to build that truck and deliver it to us within that timeframe.
Do you feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
You've done a lot of the groundwork already.
Yes. We're ready. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else?
Good evening. Mark Harwick, the Executive Director of the Parking Authority. Trustee Levinson, on behalf of myself, my Board, and my staff, would like to offer our condolences.
Thank you very much.
I apologize. We just heard today the news, so.
Thank you.
Sorry for your loss. I have trustee stickers I'd like to hand out for the new year, and I'm on my way.
Thank you.
Hey, we have, is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? I'd like to close public comments. We have a couple items for discussion on our agenda tonight. Before we get to that, I just want to ask the Board to try and limit discussion to eight or 10 minutes at the most. If we have to have follow-up discussions, we can. I want to make sure we do get everything, through everything on the agenda this evening. The first discussion item is for the Administrator to comment on, which is the 2011 salaries for supervisory and non-contractual employees.
Mr. President, the, at the last meeting, the Board adopted an ordinance, and there was discussion of a follow-up resolution. And looking into that and trying to determine what, what to put in the follow-up resolution, it became apparent from the past practice in the, in the village, from looking at the village charter and the administrative code, that in adopting the ordinance, essentially, the Board had done what, what it needed to do to authorize the, the Executive to, to move ahead. And so my recommendation is that no additional action by the Board is necessary, excuse me, is necessary, but that certainly at the time that action is taken, we would make sure that the Board is aware of what has happened, especially to the extent that there may be any differential increases for people who are not at the, at the top of the salary scale.
We discussed, that is acceptable to us at this time for the things that we've discussed in the past. And in our legal and personnel committee, we just asked that after this is done, we memorialize that.
Absolutely.
And for a matter of record and transparency.
Yes.
Okay. And then going forward, the fair correcting is that we have some policy expectations in regards to merit increases and everything that, that is the responsibility of the Board to set. And we'll try to take a run at it in the legal and personnel committee to present and discuss to the full Board. And then these things will be clearly presented and articulated in a timely and fair manner to our village employees, so they clearly understand what the expectations are and, and how those decisions will be made.
Precisely. And I think the next item also potentially touches on that. And if, if that study is to proceed, certainly, then my recommendation would be that when a system is agreed upon, it become part of the salary ordinance. It should be very clearly spelled out how, how that will take place in the future.
Do you mean it will become part of the salary range ordinance?
Yes. Yeah, to the, to the extent that increases in the future would be specifically tied to performance by policy of, of the village, how that takes place should be spelled out in the salary ordinance, in order that you, as trustees, are adopting a policy, and so that the village president and the village administrator, in setting salaries, are required to do it in accordance- administrator in setting salaries are required to do it in accordance with this policy.
Very well, yeah, I mean, to your original point, while I think exactly what you said is what some of us argued exactly at the last meeting, is that the ordinance and the increases were one and the same, and there was no need for resolution. The sheer fact that a resolution is forthcoming, whoops, sorry, let me say that again. I think exactly what you said is what some of us argued at the last meeting, that the salary ordinance and the resolution were one and the same. However, other people felt differently. And I think the reason we had the outcome we did was because a resolution was forthcoming. I think had we known there was no resolution, I think we would have had a very different outcome at the last meeting. So it just, I just sort of, you know, I mean, it is what it is at this point, but I voted no last time, and I would still vote no. But I think it's procedurally, I think we would have had a very different outcome. And just to sort of change the rules midstream, just procedurally, just makes me a little uncomfortable.
Well, I think there was another suggestion that was made that, and we have a difference of opinion, if we at the budget workshop had come to a consensus of what the increase would be, that some of us who felt that we didn't have a consensus, that in fact, when we do have the budget workshop and we talk about salaries, and in fact, I went back to the minutes of all of the budget workshops, and there's nothing in the minutes that talks to any salary increase.
For the record, it was one of the closed session items, but you're right, I looked also looked at the minutes, and it was ambiguous in the language of the minutes. No disrespect, Robin. But it was, there was discussion in the closed session.
And what I think comes out of that is that once we either have a straw poll at the budget workshop, that in fact, it is memorialized, it is transparent to the community that this is the type of raise that we're proposing to go forward with. And that was, the whole purpose is to become transparent in what we're doing.
And the recommendation from the Personnel Committee tonight is to memorialize that budget workshop discussion and decision in a resolution.
Correct.
So a resolution will come out of that.
Well, I will certainly, administrator and I spoke about this today, that there will certainly be something written, given to the board about this decision. And I think for whatever it's worth, this is the last time we'll make the decision this way, because we are going to move forward with performance-based pay increases. So this is the last time we're going to be deciding about this anyway. So the process wasn't perfect, and I'll certainly take responsibility for not having a full understanding of the history of that in the last meeting. But it sounds like that it's pretty clear of the board's setting the policy of salary ranges, and the administrator and village president setting the actual salaries. But again, that will all be changed for 2012 anyway. Going forward.
Thank you.
That's a great segue into the salary study.
At the last meeting also, Mr. President, I had said that in prior comments, it wasn't apparent that the search for a new administrator was proceeding so quickly, and I had envisioned being able to complete an entire study while I was here on an interim basis. And that apparently is not going to be possible. And so as a result of your request at the last meeting, I sent a memo giving a good deal more detail about the work that would be required to carry out the study and indicating that I believe you do have three alternatives. I'm not automatically suggesting that you simply turn to me and continue my work after the new administrator is here, although I would love for that to happen, because I've been, I've been involved with this discussion really almost since it started when I came here. But obviously, as I pointed out in the memo, you could assign the work to the new administrator along with the other 17.3 thousand.
They're going to have enough on their plate.
Or could develop an RFP and go out for a consulting contract on it. I believe a reasonable amount of the work can be done based on things I know already or already have in hand and work that I've done on this general subject, that I can come up with about two-thirds of it. But the meat, which is the comparison with the other towns, is simply not going to happen in that period of time. I mean, my hours aside, it's simply not possible to gather that information in that amount of time. And so I put this before you, and we'll proceed any way you wish to proceed.
Personally, I would love for you to continue doing this. I don't know if we have to put this out for a bid, or if this is professional services under a threshold. But I'd be curious to know what the board members think.
I would like you to bid because it makes, to continue, rather, because it makes sense. You're in the environment, you have a great understanding of some of the challenges, the history, what our expectations are, and to change the, change a person or consultant at this point with so many other changes coming on, a new administrator and everything like that. And this is so critical to get done on a timely basis. I would support that you continue to do it, because it just makes good business sense to do so. I would ask our counselor if there's any need to go out for bid.
Continue it under the existing contract.
Okay.
I would agree with you, and as we had discussed in the legal committee, maybe this can be part of the transition of the new administrator, as his workload going into a new policy and getting input from him as well.
Okay.
Do you want to put together an outline of the costs that you would expect to be associated with this? What steps would you require of us to move forward?
And you're identifying 60 hours of additional work. What is that going to cost?
Well, the existing contract is at $110 an hour. I also indicated that I think personally that the private sector comparison, which was clearly part of discussion from the beginning, will actually turn out to be of marginal value because of the titles that we're dealing with, where we're basically dealing with management-level municipal employees as opposed to comparisons with truck drivers, secretaries, account clerks, so on and so forth. And finding valid, supportable, comparable positions to municipal clerk, tax collector, assessor, is very time-consuming, because those jobs don't really exist in the private sector. So you practically have to choose two or three titles and extrapolate from those titles to all the others. And, you know, you could argue endlessly about each of those extrapolations. And that's why I think it's probably of marginal value. I mean, people who are interested in being tax collectors for municipalities are not typically interested in being head of revenue for a large corporation. So you, you know, you just don't get the comfortable fit, I believe. And I've tried to do it before, and I had a very hard time. And it worked at the secretarial level. It worked at the blue-collar level. It didn't work at the management level. So that would cut it back from 60 to maybe 30 hours at 110, which is a significant difference.
One of the things I'm wondering is, can we, can we make progress, because it seems like a related subject, on how to develop the performance pay aspect of, you know, the initiative that we want to adopt? Because it seems to me that while Regan would be doing this and knowing what he knows about the village and the positions at this point, that that might be not only a good way to make up that money, but to kill two birds with one stone.
It is a good idea.
Yeah. I think there are different alternatives of looking at merit pay. We could create pay by performance, and we can create a bonus pool that we can distribute to the employees, which keeps the annual compounded amount lower, but gives the opportunity of higher numbers to individuals. So we should have a discussion or at least a comparison if any other municipality in the state has done something like that.
And my intention was to give you probably three alternatives that potentially are workable at the municipal level for putting some sort of performance pay into place. Discussing the pros and cons on each one, and then the decision is yours.
That would be included in that approximate 30 hours?
Well, that, that I think I can do is just in the process. While I'm here, just based on the fact that I've given it a lot of thought over the years. So it's really putting the thoughts on paper rather than doing research.
There's another piece to that, which I think Steve needs to opine, which are the statutory requirements or inhibiting factors that may come into play. Some of the jobs.
I, you know, I've shared with, I've shared with you in the legal and personnel committee the issues that are involved, and we can take it to that next level. It's, you know, it's being done in certain communities. The authority for it is not clear.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Trustee Goldberg, did you want to talk a little bit about office support in the clerk's office?
This was, it was actually an issue from last meeting that got carried forward. I'm not sure how it still is relevant. But I know with Sherry, our deputy clerk, out on extended leave for medical issues, the concern was raised about limited support or the need for additional support in the clerk's office. So I thought I would throw it out. I don't know if there's an ETA yet, or when she'll be returning, and what the workload's been like, and what the need, whether it still exists now the holidays have passed. But I thought we should discuss it.
Regan, would you be the one?
I think at this point, the village clerk knows more about it than I do.
I appreciate, you know, you questioning whether the office needs support or not. Our deputy clerk has been out of the office now for about six weeks. I spoke with her today. We are hoping that she's back with us by the end of the month, but if not, we're really talking early February. We got through the year end, and actually, we're transitioning very nicely into this new year. Recently, I did ask our interim administrator, Mr. Burkauer, if he perhaps could lend some support to my office, just to help get out some of our government record requests. They seem to be coming in kind of heavily right now. So where my office does need the help, I've been asking Mr. Burkholder for that help. I also want to state that we've been getting some terrific support from some of our other managers and staff in Village Hall, particularly our tax assessor's office. Ellen's been very helpful in assisting us. Ojenna Davis has been very helpful as well. And our tax collector's office, they're kind of always pitching in, you know, helping with mail distribution and getting other things done that we might need. So I do appreciate the help that we're also getting from our different village departments. I want to thank them.
Do you have like a standing request at Seton Hall, let's say, for interns? I know for a while you did have an intern that was helping, and that's something that's like, you could always use that?
Yeah, I actually, yeah, we have drafted an internship job description, and that's on hold right now, only because it would be difficult for me at this time, without the deputy clerk in place, to be overseeing an intern at this point, at the same time Yvonne Williams has recently come on board in November, and we're really training her, and she's actually fast-tracking very nicely with us. So, but that's something that we're looking to put in place going down the road.
Under some new rules, employers generally have to be very careful with internships, and they've got to be designed for the benefit of the intern as a learning experience, not as unpaid Cooley labor. And the employer can get into trouble and, essentially, for getting free labor. And so Ms. Fine and I discussed that and did come to the conclusion that with everything else, just trying to get the work out, coming up with a learning plan and how the intern is going to learn about municipal government and get something of academic benefit out of it is probably more than anybody's really able to take on with everything else that's going on.
I think this presents, you know, a possible opportunity to look at some of our resident committees, and if there are projects or areas that we need assistance with, for example, Public Information and Marketing as a committee, that I have gotten some interest from various residents who want to get involved with it, that's not, hasn't really been meeting for, I don't know how long. So if we can find projects that these committees can work on, we might be able to fulfill some of the needs we might have while still providing people, you know, an opportunity to volunteer, but not necessarily under a formal internship guise, but more of our volunteer committees.
Today, we needed a photocopying committee.
I don't know if we're going to get people to join that committee.
I suspect not.
I had a different impression of what this topic was going to be focused on, and I thought it was the secretaries for the standing committees.
That's the next.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
But good segue. Do you want to, Regan, I know you wrote a memo which you forwarded to us. Do you want to comment on that briefly?
Yeah, I think the, I hope the memo speaks for itself. There, as I pointed out, there's been a certain disconnect between what the 1982 Municipal Administrative Code says about the committee and the practice. And I don't think there's any inherent problem with the practice. I made some recommendations concerning how to turn the minutes into something that is not intrusive for whoever is taking part in the meeting, whether it's a member of the committee who happens to be taking minutes, or whether it's a staff member who is also trying to participate in the discussion. And suggesting a perhaps revised list of staff members who would normally be attending each of the meetings. Now, there might be some variation in that depending on what was on the agenda for a particular meeting. There could well be something on the Public Safety Committee that the administrator, for instance, would want to be involved with, but that normally you would anticipate that either the police chief or the fire chief would be taking notes and suggesting simply that there are only a couple things coming out of those meetings, which are meant, designed really to examine policy, to gather information, to make recommendations to the entire board, that there are only a few outcomes of those discussions that really need to be recorded. And what is the recommendation? What is the additional information that is needed? Or, but that if there was discussion with no outcome to be continued at a future meeting, there probably isn't as, as I have discussed with the clerk, I admire... I, you know, I admire her minutes because I think they're very efficient, they happen very quickly of these meetings, because she cuts to the chase. What was the decision? What was the vote? And I, I have worked with clerks who spent 75% of their time writing novels about each What I, as I called them in the memo, the he said, she said minutes. And then the governing body gets together the next time and says, well, on page 42, that's not what I meant, and then amends the minutes. I, I'm not sure anything that is useful over the long term comes out of that. So these were, were just some thoughts. I, I think it is useful to have staff at the meetings as you're, as you're discussing policy. I've also indicated that I think it, it should be one of your goals as the new administrator comes on board, to make sure that you don't need to use committees to check up on what's happening as a result of prior decisions, that there is another way of dealing with that through reporting, whether it is real-time reporting or, or monthly reports that are oriented towards accomplishment and outcome, or a combination. So that you, you have confidence that when you've made a decision, it's going to get carried out and know that it has been because you've gotten a report on it.
The challenge I have with this, you know, now that we've moved to this new format of this meeting and we don't, no longer have reports from committees, not only is it difficult for us to know what's going on at the committees, it's difficult for the public to know. The way our minutes at many of our meetings are done now are very thorough. You could, Public Safety, for example, I think, you know, the person who does the minutes does a very good job and I think anybody could read those minutes not being at the meeting and have a very good sense of what transpired at the meeting and all elements of it. I think there's, there's something to be said to having, you know, they're not voluminous, they're not a novel, but they're very, they're thorough. I think, I think she really tells the right story, level of depth and level of detail. So again, for those of my colleagues that are not at the meeting or the public that's not at that meeting, they feel that like they, like they were there, they know what's transpired. I think going to just, I don't mean to trivialize your comments, but like a checkbox, you know, yes, this needs action, or no, this has been resolved, or oh, this needs follow-up, I think oversimplifies and I think a lot will be lost. I think we'll, we'll have a lot of these debates, oh, no, that's, we'll have those debates. By having the minutes, it gives you a record to point back to and say, no, we didn't say that and it's something we can all, will agree to. I, I just see not having good minutes being a road to problems in the future.
Well, as I indicated, Trustee Goldberg, I think that if, if the discussion in the meeting leads to a recommendation on a particular issue, that recommendation needs to be clearly stated and I would see meetings like this evolving into a situation where on, under discussion, you would have a report from the Public Safety Committee produced by a staff member, saying that this issue was discussed with the Public Safety Committee, here are the pros and cons, and the Public Safety Committee recommends alternative three. So that the, the report may be as extensive as the minutes are now, but comes here for action rather than simply recording a discussion. And if that discussion doesn't come here for action, I, I'm, I'm just saying that at some point it would lead to a recommendation to do something or not to do something. I mean, a recommendation not to do something is just as important as a recommendation to do it.
Well, I think there was one other part of the discussion that we had, going back into the administrator and the department heads, if in fact the department heads were reporting on a consistent basis on the items in which they're involved in, which may reflect some of the policies that we put forward, that would be extremely helpful so that we don't have to talk about project status at a standing committee meeting, but we really understand it, or if we need now to change policy or implement some additional policy, the meeting becomes more productive. The other piece that seems to be missing in the discussion is that not only are minutes taken, but we have an agenda that we need to create for the standing committees, which I think is part of that responsibility.
And I would add to this that, you know, I think that part, part of this is for the board to solidify its intention with the committees. You know, are they, are they groups that, that are checking up on the status of projects or are they groups that are incubators of policy? And I think all the committees kind of do like a different mix of those two things and it would be great, and I'm not, I'm not 100% sure if that difference is a good thing where we're being personal with our committees and our issues, or whether it's inconsistency. So I'm not sure if it's a good or a bad thing, but along the lines of the administrator's comments about bringing issues and making recommendations, I think that that's following along the lines of something which we're trying to do more, which is be formal with the way that information comes to us. So it's not just someone adding an agenda item and we get to the meeting and not really know the history or the context, but that it was vetted in a committee, it was discussed in a certain way and it was presented as a recommendation. But I think there's also the possibility to kind of have our cake and eat it too. You know, if there, if the board wishes to have as much information as possible about some of these things, I think A, some of that could come through the administrator in more frequent or detailed reports if that's what the board wants, or B, that the minutes are literally formatted in a way where there is some, like the Public Safety Committee, where you, you know, it's kind of like each paragraph was a separate issue that was discussed, where you have that and then have some clear formatting that says, you know, a discussion item or a recommendation, something that makes it clear so that if someone were to quickly look through it, they could see that, you know, at the end, these items were, these items will be continued to the next meeting, these items are going for recommendation to the board, and here's the committee's recommendation. But all the committees do have pretty different ways of formatting those minutes. So maybe it'd be interesting to look at what some other towns do, maybe, you know, nonprofit or other governance organizations and see how they take committee minutes from those structures to the entire governing body and if there's some generally accepted format that we could use to provide some more consistency.
The other thing, Mr. President, and I mean, this clearly is going to be something for the new village administrator to deal with. What I've been trying to encourage with the key management staff is when, when there is an issue that needs to be decided, it, it needs to show up in a memo. There need to be alternative approaches that are discussed in the memo and, and discussed with the committees. So rather than saying, here's the problem, here is the solution, because there is never the solution. Here are the, here are the solutions, discuss it with the committee and get a recommendation out of that. That the committee's report to the Board of Trustees almost writes itself at that point, if the department heads follow through on it. And as I say, that, to the extent that the issues arise while I'm still here, that's what I will encourage and try to make happen. If that's the sort of thing that you want to make happen over the long term, you're going to have to make that clear with the permanent administrator.
We talked about, we discussed, touched on this in the Legal and Personnel Committee and, and I'll be following up with you and also Robin and the council will be in regards to your transition plan and I, we thought that that would be a good, our recommendation coming out of the committee, that that would be a good place to set some clear expectation and some parameters for the new administrator, what policy positions are, what expectations are, and put some milestones in to see if the new administrator and the Board of Trustees are really meeting expectations because we're working together in partnership on behalf of the village. So I'll be following up with you and the clerk and the council have, have another task that they'll, they'll be needing with you to discuss.
I think one last point to consider too is, you know, as far as some of these decisions go about how we organize our meetings or how we organize some of these processes, you know, we're not writing these things in stone, especially bringing new people into the organization. If we want to try something and we try it for three months and then we say, okay, well three months, we're going to look at it, did it work or did it not work? I think that's okay for us to experiment that way. And if we like it, then we can memorialize it, you know, in a resolution and make that a policy going forward. And if not, we can try something else. You know, I think for part of this is finding out what's the best fit. You know, we're not going to find a right answer, like you said, for everyone, but what's right for this organization. I just want to make sure to put that out there that we don't have to decide everything at the beginning.
If I can make one more comment on meeting dates and times, number two, staff members have personal lives. I'm, I'm concerned that we have been noticing the meetings, which is great. We notice the meetings so that we can all attend the meetings, but that, my understanding from the clerk is that that means she has to attend all the notice meetings. And I think it's something we should discuss because that's increased the number of meetings that the clerk has to attend, unless there's a way around this. Steve looks like he has something.
This is an ordinance.
I think there are ways we can, we can address that. There are ways that we can address that. We can deputize, we can deputize.
Mike.
We can deputize the, the secretaries for the various meetings to, to function in that capacity and, and deliver minutes to, to the clerk for, for maintenance. I'm, I'm sure we can handle that. There's, there's one.
Okay, good. And then there used to be with the deputy clerk, sometimes the deputy clerk would sit in when there wasn't a, a staff member, so we could also kind of, that's another option that we have.
Well, I, I will sit with the clerk and, and address that issue so that she's comfortable that, that the meetings do not require her attendance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gold, would you like to talk about Bachi Courts?
Well, let's talk about Bachi Courts. Change the subject here. The, and then Trustee Bauer will help me with this if I, if I'm off target with what's happening, but apparently the River Committee has asked about the Bachi Courts. Is this correct so far? Okay. And some questions came to Kate from Saratoga Associates regarding the courts. We wanted to know if they could be used in future planning. Basically, that would mean that we'd lose the Bachi Courts. Kate had let me know that she hasn't seen anybody using the courts in years.
About our recreation director?
Yes, Kate Schmidt, the recreation director, says that she has not seen anyone use those courts in years. There used to be a small group several years ago, haven't seen them, we scared them out of town.
We repealed them on the Fourth of July, right?
That's right. They didn't even come to that event on the Fourth of July, right. So I just wanted to run it past the full board to make sure, I was comfortable with removing the Bachi Courts for what the River Committee had planned. I wanted to make sure the full board was comfortable with that.
And so what you're saying, if I understood it correctly, they really are not used anymore?
That's what she's saying. She does say that they're not particularly well-maintained, so it's hard to say if they'd be used if they were well-maintained, but she doesn't seem to think so. No one's come to her and asked her questions about them or asked her to maintain them.
If they're not used and as another purpose or that area could be repurposed for recreation benefit of, of the residents, I have no issue with it.
That's set back pretty far from the river. I'm trying to understand the correlation between that and the river.
What was proposed?
I don't know if anything's been proposed yet.
I think, first of all, I have no idea what the repurposing of that area would be and I can ask Saratoga Associates at the River Greenway Committee meeting tomorrow night. I think they just wanted to know if it was possible and available, because if it wasn't, they wouldn't include that. But they are, we are looking to renovate the skate house, so that's a usable, you know, safe, lit and usable place. Again, for what purpose, that's not ours to decide. To clean the duck pond and, and obviously the perimeter of the duck pond is falling in and everything. So I would say everything east of the, east border of the duck pond is kind of within our purview right now, only because you don't want to fix up something nice and, you know, five or 10 feet away have something crummy looking.
Where's east?
East is that way.
Down south, South Orange Avenue toward north.
Okay. So the pool side of the river is east.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why I said east of the eastern perimeter of the duck pond, we're pretty much looking at that as well as the duck pond.
Can we solicit input from the community if they have any, any reactions?
Put in the gas light or something?
Yeah, maybe, sure. I think that's a good idea. We could put something into the, into the next gas light. There will obviously be at least one, if not more, public meetings associated with the plan that comes out for the remainder of the phases that are being planned right now of the, of the Greenway. We're not even near that. I don't know when that would be.
Mr. President, I can also put a blurb of some sort on the, the website. I was looking at it today and realizing a bunch of the news items are pretty out of date, so I, I want to update that and, you know, we can put a Bachi anyone question in there and just, you know, find out if, you know, people have been playing when Kate's not been looking or.
I, I think that would be fine, especially if we can put some, some context, maybe you can get some wording from Trustee Bauer or Gold about what's put in there, especially if that helps raise awareness of the entire project and maybe we'll get some ideas about other things as well.
I guess I, this would be a good time to say the River Committee meets the second Tuesday of every month at 6:30 here in Village Hall, so that's tomorrow night and then the second Tuesday.
Okay.
Trustee Gold, is that?
That summarizes my discussion of the Bachi Courts, yes.
Thank you. Hey, our next discussion item is restructuring of village departments. For our administrator to comment?
Yes, Mr. President, back in September, when I was being interviewed for this interim appointment, one of the items that was discussed was the whole idea of reorganization within village government and it's come up several times at different contexts since I've been here. One of the things that, that really generated the memorandum that I sent you was the need to give some instruction to the architect with respect to interior design for the Village Hall renovations, because there, there are certainly structural constraints within the building that he's going to have to take into account as he designs the interior. And I thought that it was a, a good opportunity to pick up on the whole subject of reorganization. And so what I've done is give a, an overview of the current organization as it is set forth in the Administrative Code and then given you some thoughts falling into three categories. One is, and the most important, I believe, enhanced customer service, enhanced efficiency, and then potential things that may or may not occur, may or may not be within the authority of the Board of Trustees and village government or municipal government generally to make happen, but just some thoughts, the kind of blue sky. As I indicated in the memo, the basic thought is that when people walk in the, the door to the new Village Hall, that they should be in a space where they can accomplish almost all of their work with one stop, unless that work becomes highly technical, you know, requires higher level kind of review and discussion, that if they want to, if they want to pay taxes, if they want to get a license, if they want to get a parking permit, if they want to apply for a marriage license, they just walk up to a desk and they get it done. And the hope would be that in 99% of the situations, somebody is not told, oh, you have to go down that hall, around the corner, up three steps, et cetera. the corner, up three steps, et cetera. And I, as I said in the memo, it's kind of a shameless appropriation from something that's actually been going on in Milburn for some time. Other towns, to a greater or lesser extent, have tried it, not necessarily everybody in one place, the way Milburn has attempted to do it, but various kinds of functions in one place. And it would involve not a true reorganization, but a reorientation in which the current support staff would get cross-training and so forth, continue to provide support directly to individual offices, but also be there for people who come into the building. There is no way, I think, to predict. One can hope that there will be a significant lessening of walk-in traffic over time through the miracle of electronics. But we have no way to predict when that is going to happen, the extent to which it is going to happen. Some of the things that we do currently, the state won't permit to happen electronically. And so we got to deal with that. So the major question, I think, for tonight is whether you find that idea appealing and if we can convey it to the architect as he approaches the interior and gets plans ready for the renovation. There were a couple of consolidations that I recommended in the memo. One of them is real, one of them is a little more conceptual. I'm recommending that the Office of the Village Engineer and the Department of Code Enforcement and Inspections become a Department of Community Development. I think they're all basically dealing conceptually with the same thing. And that is development improvements, infrastructure, whether it is municipal in the case of the village engineer, or personal in the case of people getting permits. It's all conceptually building and making things happen and reviewing plans and so forth. In addition, with the non-uniform construction code, the state permit system with the other work having been outsourced, all of a sudden, one of the village's limited number of designated departments is really now down to two full-time and a couple, and some part-time people, which is pretty small for a department. So I don't see functional changes, really. I don't, I don't, it will evolve, but I think it should evolve under that same umbrella. Also, there is a Department of Administration Revenue and Finance, and also a Department of Public Service. And that Department of Public Service actually consists of independent agencies. So it's a budgeting conceit rather than an operating department. And I think there's a need to maintain the budgeting conceit for financial reasons and oversight reasons. But I'm suggesting that it become a Department of Administration Finance and Public Service. It's been pointed out to me that while I had put information technology in as public service, it has actually been considered part of the administrator's office with it put together into a single department. That distinction wouldn't have to be made. But certainly, I think information technology should be, should be part of that. Also feeling that there should be a clear emphasis in the administrator's office on contract management and performance management. That the village is getting to the point of having so many contracts, whether it is outsourced services, shared services, or simply services that are being purchased, as they have always been. But as you look at single-source recycling and you have multi-year contracts, and you look at shared services and you may have multi-year contracts, some of those contracts require a year's notice if you're not going to re-up. And I think it's going to be really important for that to become a main focus in the administrator's office. So that when a contract is awarded, a timetable gets set up. And if it requires a year's notice to cancel a service at the end of three years, that there's, there's something on a calendar somewhere 18 months in advance to say, what do we want to do? What do we want to tell them six months from now? And to make sure that, I mean, we have had situations just in the time I've been here that we couldn't call a plumber because, you know, the contract had expired. And that sort of thing shouldn't happen. And the idea of the performance management just takes us right back to the discussion of performance-based pay and getting into a system. Trustee Levinson and I have had a couple of discussions about the service level agreements that the village is entering into with Maplewood relative to the shared service of court and the shared service of code administration. And I think that having shared service, not agreements, but specific service level expectations for each major service of the village, would lead to performance management and a focus on outcomes. And I think outcome is really what everybody needs to be interested in. So these are thoughts for you to chew on for the future, with the exception of the idea of the customer service center, which we really need to tell the architect something pretty soon.
Well, I think we're, as Doug used to say, well, in agreement. But Deborah and I and yourself have had preliminary meetings about reorganization. I think what we need to do is have another session at it. I think we all were in agreement of how we want to move forward. There are certain things that are still open that need to be resolved, and I think a part of that reorganization very much needs information technology support to make it happen and happen well. And there are some things that we have been looking at but have not implemented as of yet. There's still pending proposals supposedly from Livingston in one area, which still, I don't know if you've received it yet.
I have.
Oh, good. Which is another outsourced consideration. But again, I think it's a great move forward.
Yeah, we had two meetings, including village president along with Howard and myself.
I left out Nancy.
And Nancy, yeah. So I want to make sure that we include everyone. And I agree with you, trustee Levinson, that we need to have another meeting as soon as we can all coordinate our calendars, because as our administrator said, that time is of essence, so.
And come back with recommendations.
Right, so if you want to reach out to us with a possible date, and as soon as we all can coordinate our schedules and have that meeting done, so we can then communicate back to the board.
Sure. Great. Thank you. Now, we have 15 resolutions this evening on our consent agenda. Could the clerk please read each of them?
We have a resolution reappointing Mr. Bowser as a regular member to the South Orange Board of Health. A resolution appointing Mr. Thomas as a regular member to the South Orange Board of Health. A resolution reappointing Mr. Shapiro as an alternate number two member on the zoning board of adjustment. A resolution appointing Mr. Gromen as a regular member on the zoning board of adjustment, excuse me. A resolution appointing the village clerk as the public agency compliance officer. Resolution appointing Thomas Machetti to the position of Director of the Department of Public Works for the township of South Orange Village. We have a 2011 temporary budget resolution for calendar year 2012. A temporary emergency appropriation resolution for previous year tax appeals. A resolution canceling tax overpayments and small balances from calendar year 2010. A resolution re-adopting the cash management plan for the township of South Orange Village. A resolution designating deputy custodians of public records. Resolution authorizing the village president to execute a contract with advanced recovery for the collection and disposal of computers and electronics in the township of South Orange Village for calendar year 2012, and this would be at no charge to the village. A resolution endorsing village priorities and goals for calendar year 2012. A resolution determining the form and other details of a not-to-exceed $12 million aggregate principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2012, of the township of South Orange Village, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, and providing for their sale. And we have a resolution authorizing an executive session at tonight's meeting of the Board of Trustees.
And those items on our executive session agenda, under contract negotiations, PBA and SOA negotiations, village council professional service appointment, under attorney-client privilege matters, governance memo, and XG telecommunication application, and under employment-related matters, the administrator search.
I'd like to add a South Orange Water Commission to that.
Sure.
If I could, with respect to the consent agenda, if I could just ask if we pull out number six. I would like to see resolutions like this get a little more prominent. I hate to see them buried within the rest of the consent agenda. I think it deserves a little bit more recognition, in my opinion.
Sure, that's fine.
I'd like to pull out 10, 12, and 14. On number 10, I, I go through, excuse me. I go through this every year. I have some objections to some of the items in the cash management plan. And after today's discussion, I think there needs to be some additions to that plan, specifically in our bonds and ban reporting. On number 12, I think it needs to be discussed, sorry, number 12 is just a question that, is this in sync with Maplewood having alternating electronic pickup days? Yes? Okay, thanks. And on number 14.
But did you not want to take out 12 then?
No, I just, it was clarification.
Okay.
And on number 14, we've spent some time today trying to understand what this resolution was all about. And I think there needs to be a clarification or at least a discussion about what it's attempting to do and what it is about. There were a number of format changes that needed to be made to the document itself during the day with a number of typos. And we've discovered a previous ordinance that was made in error, has a typo in the total amount, which is part of the discussion in this particular resolution. It goes back into the refunding ordinance that we had last year for $12 million. It referenced 2005's bond issue as $6 million, when it should have been $10 million. And there are some additional items that should be discussed and why I wanted to pull it back. The problem with it is, is that we are in need to go forward with it because of interest rates. And I wouldn't want to hold up moving it forward, but I think there's been a lot of sloppiness in putting it together.
But is there any estimate as far as, I mean, the rates that we think we have right now versus two weeks from now?
I, I don't know.
Are you suggesting that it be held up?
No, no.
Okay, so that's not an issue, Mr. President?
I think, I think it needs to be further detailed into what this resolution's incorporating. It's not only, it's picking up some portion of bands, which I don't know the dollar value of. It's taking the differential money that we had left over from our previous ordinance from last year that was for refunding the 2005 bond issue, which was, which would be $10 million. So it's between $10 and $12 million authorization that now this resolution is, or this issue is going to cover, which includes down payment of some of the bands that we have.
The improvement bonds?
The improvement bonds, the tax refund bonds.
The tax refunds, but no special projects, which are discussed in the OS, the POS.
Correct.
That item will not appear in the final, in the final OS. And I saw a corrected resolution that was sent to the clerk today.
I have it in front of you.
I forwarded a copy to you, trustee Levinson, which now correctly states the ordinance number and date in the initial whereas clause.
Correct. Had the wrong year on it.
So that, that issue is addressed. You also questioned the use of a resolution as opposed to an ordinance. Each of the note and bond refunding authorizations came by ordinance. This resolution is in essence an administrative action that wraps all of those together in a common official statement, simply for the purpose of reducing costs of issuance. And that's the reason for the resolution. The resolution doesn't authorize the issuance of any securities.
I would request that the CFO provide us with how much of the ban refunding is part of this resolution, which is not stated in here. We don't know what the values are.
The, well, and when the OS is finalized, this is now a preliminary, it's a red herring. Once that document is finalized, all of those numbers, including interest rates, which aren't appearing there.
And fees.
Because this is a negotiated sale, you won't know that until a later date. Of course, all of that is subject to the approval of the local financial board, which has approved these transactions, given certain savings.
But just to be clear, you wanted 2012, 10 taken out. That was the only one. You wanted a clarification on 14?
Well, I just wanted, yes, clarification or explanation.
Okay.
2010, I do have a continuing issue about some of the items in the cash management plan. And I would like to see now reporting described in that cash management plan of our bond and ban exposures. We do not, as we found today, that it's the discretion of the administrator, excuse me, the village president and the CFO to issue the bans we, I think, would require or should require, that we have a reporting of that information to the board.
So, Mr. President, could I ask trustee Levinson, do you, do you wish to amend resolution 10, or do you wish to?
I'd like to hold it.
Okay.
And as well as that, again, it came to us in short notice. And as well as that, again, it came to us in short notice, it's a few-page document, which is somewhat technical.
I have a question, and my only question is, I have no problem with holding it, but only if it will have no negative financial impact on us by holding it.
No, this is really an administrative requirement of the State Department of Community Affairs and, by the time they realize they don't have it, they'll have it.
Well said. Unless there's any other discussion, if someone wants to make a motion with 2012-006 and 2012-010 taken out?
I move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have a resolution now for separate action.
Since you voted, we want to do six.
Yeah, right, move 2012-006 on separate action. And for the public's benefit, this is to...
Don't you need a second?
I'm just stating what it is first. I'm making a motion. It's to appoint Tom Machetti to Director of Department of Public Works. For those who don't know, Mario Luciani retired at the end of 2011, and this is to appoint a new director, and, in my opinion, a position well-earned and deserved, and I'd like to do this and give him the proper recognition. And thanks to Mario for all his years of service as well.
I second.
Would the board like a roll-call vote for this?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis-Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Resolution 2012-06 did pass.
I think we're all excited for Tommy to take on this position with Public Works. Okay, is there any new business this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.